Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the November 5th, 2013 Business Meeting of the Washington County Board of Education. We have a quorum of members present. I'd like to call the meeting to order. To begin the meeting, I'd like to introduce Steve Fitzwater. Steve is a fifth grade student at Lincolnshire Elementary, and Steve is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and that will be followed by a moment of silence. Steve?
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Thank you. Don't go anywhere, Steve. This is your moment, your second moment. So Steve, why don't you introduce the folks that you brought with you today?
Um, the person in the sailor shirt is my stepdad, Doug, and then, uh, uh, um, the person with the long hair is my aunt. Her name is Aunt Dot, and then my mom has a big smile.
When our children are doing great things, we usually all have a big smile, so I understand your mom's feeling. Can you tell us a little about yourself? What do you like to do when you're not in school? What subjects do you like in school?
I like doing karate.
Karate?
And playing video games and making rubber band bracelets. And, um, in school, I like to do science and social studies.
All right. Is there anything else we should know about, Steve?
No.
All right. Well, thank you so much for coming to start our meeting. Thank you to Mom, Stepdad, and Aunt Dot for bringing him here to start our meeting off. Anybody else have any guests or students they'd like to introduce? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
(Inaudible)
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fisher. Are there any comments or amendments to the agenda? If not, questions on the approval of the agenda? All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero, and the student member concurs. Approval of the amendments?
Mr. President, I move for the approval of several sets of minutes from a work session on Tuesday, October the 15th, a closed session on the same date, and our regular business meeting on Tuesday, October the 15th. We'd like to move for approval of the minutes.
Motion by Mr. Bailey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Brightman. Are there any comments, questions, or corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor of approving the minutes? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero, and the student board member concurs. So, the next item on the agenda is a special recognition. I'd like to introduce Kitty Blumsack from the Maryland Association of Boards of Education, who is here to present a plaque to one of our board members for her professional development. Kitty?
Thank you for having this face between your students and me. And also, thank you for allowing me to be here to celebrate the work, not only in this board, but at the stockroom.
You know, my belief is, as a board, you all have been strongly committed to assuring excellence in the classroom, not only by the decisions that you make with students at this board table, but also by ensuring that you're informed and knowledgeable about what happens around the state and also nationally. And by going that extra mile, from my perspective, and taking a leadership at the state level. Both Jackie Fisher and Paul Bailey have been part of our conferences, have been part of committees, and that's just glorious. Justin Hardings, you've been serving as, on our MABE Budget and Planning Committee, and this year was especially trying, so thank you for that. Wayne Ridenhour, you're one of, what, two board members who are on the P-20 Leadership Council Task Force on Arts Education, which is a state task force, and I think that's really a stellar representation. Donna Brightman is not only chair of our Legislative Committee, but she's a graduate of MABE's Leadership Programs One and Two. And Melissa, who is a very new board member, has already shown her leadership by being on the Resolutions and the Conference Planning Committee, and she's also enrolled in our Leadership One program. Karen Harshman, my reason for being here today continues to be an outstanding member of MABE's Conference Committee, and she was the liaison with your county and with our committee in sharing the incredible artwork of students that I was able to celebrate a few months ago. As a former teacher, her commitment to student learning and to professional development has been stellar. Today, I'm pleased to honor her with a plaque commemorating her participation and successful completion of MABE's Leadership Program. As a program participant, Ms. Harshman attended courses on governance, policy, educational trends, and has spent her time attending the state board meeting, as well as observing other boards as they do their work. She's a valued member of our learning community, so please join me in congratulating Karen Harshman on this achievement.
(Applause) (Inaudible) 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 I'd like to thank the board for allowing me to attend these meetings. It was just unbelievable, the connections that you make with other people in the state and on a national level cannot be matched. The keynote speakers that appear there, you would never have the opportunity anyplace else to hear, and it's just a fabulous opportunity, and thank you again.
Thank you, Karen, for bringing the benefit of all you've learned with MABE and all your work through leadership back to this board. And Kitty, thank you for what you do to make sure boards are developed and for coming out here to present the plaque. We appreciate it very much. Next on the agenda is public comment. We do not have anybody who's signed up to speak, unless Kitty wants to say some more. All right, we move on to old business. The first item under new business is second reading and adoption of revised policy BHD. (Inaudible) 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 Good afternoon, Dr. Hardings, board members, Dr. Wilcox. During the Board of Education's Public Business Meeting on October 1st, 2013, the board discussed Board Policy BHD, which is entitled "Board Member Compensation and Expenses." In a proposed amendment to the policy, the Board of Education moved forward to adopt the first reading of the policy and amendment to the policy. Since the action taken by the Board of Education on October 1st, 2013, the proposed amendment to this policy was placed on the website, and members of the community were invited to provide comments. No comments have been received. The matter is presented at this time for the Board of Education's final approval. Thank you, Dr. Marco. Is there a motion regarding the second read and adoption of revised policy BHD?
Mr. President, I move for approval of the second read and adoption of revised policy BHD.
Mr. Ridenhour moves for approval of the second read. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Fisher, seconds. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Brightman?
Just a couple thoughts here. I believe the last time BHD was reviewed was 22 years ago, and when I'm looking at the regulations and the exhibit, they equally are of the same age or vintage. My concern is, on the bottom part of the policy, the very last sentence, it mentions the accompanying regulation will be used in requesting reimbursement to assure that accepted accounting procedures are followed. And I would suggest to my colleagues, we might want to add exhibit to regulations and actually insert updating to reflect existing practice. So I would be, I will be putting forth a motion, but a couple other questions before I do that is, should there be, when we talk about reimbursement, is it automatically assumed this is the fiscal year, starting July 1st? Would there be a need to actually frame it that way? If we're talking about sharing funds, is there any reason or purpose or advantage to saying that we're talking about a certain fiscal year rather than a calendar year when certain events happen at different times?
Usually, that level of detail will be covered in the administrative regulation.
Okay, so that would go there. And I assume the discussion of the amount would be part of our budget discussion when we open up that. Also, when I look at an adjoining policy BHB, it actually mentions different requirements of board members to attend certain events, and, which would certainly drive the cost. And I guess my concern is whether we should be looking at BHB unless we've rescinded it and I've forgotten about it. We've been going through so many. With the idea that we should make that less of a require, requirement, more of an option so it doesn't drive what that budget amount is, and I guess those were my main comments, but, and again, a motion, well, let me just put it up for discussion, and maybe either of you or the policy committee members would have some input into the existing regulations and whether they should be updated. We should give direction to update them and the exhibit as well.
I would, you know, I think a couple things. I would assume that the regulations would be updated as a matter of course as we update the policy, but that's, that would be my, my expectation, but we could certainly give direction to do it so that we're sure. As far as the, I mean, the other change that the policy committee made to the policy was in the first sentence, which is to ensure that board members use the same rates and same procedures as all Washington County Public Schools employees. So there will be some crossing of those exhibits, so there is a form that is attached to the employee.
Exactly.
So whether we want to add that as an exhibit to this or just have it as a separate exhibit, I think, you know, I think that could be covered in the regulation, really. That's just my thought, though.
My concern was that alignment. If we're saying something, but the regulations don't reflect that, and on the exhibit, it's asking for the superintendent to sign off on reimbursements, whereas our best practice is the president of the board does that. So I just saw some inconsistencies and wasn't sure the best way to maybe deal with that. So I'm asking for thoughts from my colleagues.
As for BHB, I think that's on our agenda for next week.
Is that coming up?
Mrs. Williams?
Yes. I was in support and voted in support of the amendment on the first read, and I have some concern about that now. In particular, I have concern about the statement, "An individual member may, at his or her own discretion, direct all or any portion of his or her allocation be made available to reimburse the incurred expense of another member." I don't know how you envision that playing out. I will say that, according to my understanding, individual board members have no authority. Our authority exists as a collective body. I could see that it could be the decision of the board as a whole to redistribute funds, but I don't know that it would be in anyone's best interest to have one board member need to ask another board member for additional funds to perhaps take advantage of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. So I have, I have concerns about that, that particular statement. I definitely think that we should have a process for determining allocations, and I think that's something that the board should discuss and arrive at that process in keeping with our policies, and in doing so, that we empower the board to make those kinds of decisions and not individual board members deciding other individual board members' allocations or opportunities for boardmanship growth and reimbursement for eligible expenses.
Are there other comments on the policy? Mrs. Harshman?
I too was concerned about that particular part of the amendment because I, I do feel that it's not any individual's money. It is money that is to be allocated for the use of professional growth, and if some people are more willing to attend activities for professional growth than others, those who do not spend their money should not be deciding who gets extra money to spend or to use for something else. I think if, if someone doesn't use it, it should come back to the board to be determined if we need to put that somewhere where somebody can use it. And as of right now, we have not rescinded the policy that says that we are to attend the state and national conferences, and I hope we do not, but those two are extremely worthwhile, as I'm sure you heard Ms. Blumsack say a few minutes ago. And every, every employee for Washington County is expected to have professional development. Therefore, I don't see any reason that we should not be included in that because we are, after all, employees of Washington County, and some of us attend more than others, and I don't think that they should be penalized for taking the initiative to go to more events that would improve their leadership. I've never been to any event that I did not feel I had learned something and wished that everyone had attended with me. So I think we need to keep those things in mind when we start to shave money or start to decide that everybody cannot attend what he or she feels is, is in his or her best interest for the board. Also, I had handed out a collection of all the counties and how each one allocates money to the members of the board, so I hope that everyone has had a chance to look over that. And as I read that, I noticed that many of them were given stipends just at the moment, and then if they needed more, they would get more, but the major conferences were not included in that. They were just automatically accepted when you turned in your receipts for those because they felt that was apparently important enough to not put that in with the regular funding.
Thank you, Mrs. Harshman.
Thank you.
Are there other comments? If there are no further comments, we'll go ahead and vote on the motion by Mr. Ridenhour to approve.
Mr. Hardings, I would like to propose an amendment to the policy. I move that we strike from the second paragraph, everything after the first sentence. I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm. So that it, the first, I'm sorry, the second paragraph would then read, "The yearly budgeted amount for Board of Education members shall be divided equally among the elected board members to be utilized for each individual member's incurred expenses."
Is there a second to Mrs. Williams' motion?
Second.
Second, but Mrs. Harshman? Is there any discussion on the amendment? Mrs. Fisher?
Um, I would like to know why the last sentence of that paragraph would not be included.
That's, that's a point well, well-taken, Mrs. Fisher. I thought about saying that I would like to maintain that last sentence. I have no issue with that. None at all.
And to be clear, we're referring to a sentence that says, "Any portion of a member's allocation that is not spent or encumbered by the end of fiscal year will be returned to the general fund."
I have no issue with that, so.
So is the, if we get the, the motion and the second to both agree that we're going to keep that, that the motion will now be to keep that sentence? Okay.
I'm willing to do it.
There any other further discussion? Mrs. Harshman?
I just have one question. It says that each individual member incurred expenses, to cover each individual's incurred expenses. Should that read something about business? I mean, I have a lot of expenses, but (laugh) should it read something about business or professional development expenses as opposed to just expenses?
I...
I'm just just putting that out there for the discussion.
Right.
Right. I would just point out, the first sentence, I think, provides some clarification on that particular point when it talks about using the same rates and using the same procedures as school system employees, which is set forth in the administrative regulation. So there is some, when you look at an expense, they have, there's a very defined...
Right. But it's, but it's not, we don't have a certain budgeted amount for each group, do we?
Yeah.
Yeah. Sure. Budget.
So in other words, if anyone, any of the teachers go to a conference, if the fund is used up, they can't go? Or any of the administrators? Is that correct?
We have an allotment for all three groups, ESP teachers, as well as administrators in terms of professional development.
And when that's used up, nothing is, nothing can be done?
Correct. Unless we would make a budget adjustment, which we seldom do. A lot of times, we rely on Title II for many of our professional development opportunities, but there is a finite category for professional development for each of the three groups.
Okay.
Now, I, I think that very point goes to some of why it's important to have this discussion, because there is somebody within this organization who's responsible for that budget for the teachers, for example, for professional development. It is their responsibility to allocate those funds to where they believe they are best used for, to advance the professional development goals of teachers and the system. If they go over that budget, that person is accountable for having gone over their budget. The same thing's true with administrators, and the same thing's true with ESP. The same thing's not true of the seven of us. We have a budgeted amount, and as we did in years past, we've gone over that budgeted amount, and I think the changes that are being made to this policy will force that accountability among the seven of us on our budget for professional development and travel. So I think you raise a very good point, and to me, that is, is why we sort of need this structure around it. As I said, I think the last time we discussed this, as the president, it's my job to sign, and, but I don't believe, and other presidents may disagree, but I don't believe that it's my role to tell one individual member, "You can go to this meeting, you can't go to that meeting." I just, as I said, we're all equals here. So I think putting the structure that this policy puts around it now will allow me to say, or whoever is in the president's chair to say, "You've had, you have an allocation for the year, and if you're above the allocation, that tells me where the accountability lies within that budget and travel structure." Mrs. Williams?
The budget line item is entitled "Travel," and within that category comes professional development, reimbursement for things such as the chamber dinners or lunches or any of those types of things that a board member would seek reimbursement for. I would assume mileage to professional meetings, all of those things. Does, is there any way that we can separate out, or does it all have to fall within that category because that's something that's designed by the state that says you have to have these categories and your budget has to be made in that way?
Internally, we can sub-budget. If you, if you would like to have a sub-budget set up within the, within the allocation that is currently allocated to travel for the board, we could set that either on an individual basis or as a collective for the board. My sense is, right now, I think, Justin, you know this, we have, what, a little over $7,000, $6,000?
$5,500 in this fiscal year.
$5,500 budgeted. We could do the quick math and divide it among the seven board members, and then we could further subdivide that if you chose to, on an individual basis or the board as a collective could direct us to say, "Each individual can spend X percent of their allocation." We can accommodate that any way that you would like.
Just thinking ahead to 2014, there's the possibility that the board could have three new board members who would want, I would hope, to take advantage of new board member orientation offered by MABE, you know? So I could see that there would be years where $5,500 or $6,000 would serve seven people well. I could see that in other years, that amount would not serve us well, and we would most likely end up over budget. So I really think that there's the opportunity for the board to talk more and discuss the process and come up with a way that, as a whole, we find it possible to make sure that everyone... everyone is able to take advantage of boardmanship opportunities and travel without overspending.
Overspending a lot.
Overspending.
And I'll just, by way of comment, that's why I mentioned earlier that the amount, I think the appropriate time to have that discussion is during the budget discussion. And I think we can ask for it to be itemized and reach consensus on how that might work. And I think that would be the time to do it, to do that.
Is there any other discussion on Mrs. Williams' amendment?
I am curious, actually, as to where, I mean, future student Board members would fall under this, because, I mean, we, I don't incur very many expenses, but, I mean, I was reimbursed for travel down to my new student Board member orientation, and, I mean, one year in high school, driving that far and paying for your gas in your car is a pretty big deal. And, I mean, I don't see really, definitely no specific means of addressing that in this policy without end up lying under regulation. Maybe that's a question for Dr. Wilkoff.
Well, I think, I think right now, we're having a conversation about the money this budgeted to this Board. For yours, well, we might charge it to that account initially. Ultimately, that's going to come out of the superintendent's budget for the student Board members, so we can either build it specifically or we pay it out of my budget, so whatever the Board thinks. But you're right, no student Board member should have to personally have an outlay of expense to pursue this position.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or discussion on Mrs. Williams' amendment? If not, the question is on approval of her amendment. All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion fails. Three in favor, four against, and the student member concurs with the minority. Is that correct? It's a lot to pay attention to. I try to get it right. All right. Okay, so we return to the original policy as written. Is there any other, any further discussion or amendments?
One tiny little thing. In the second paragraph, the one to, third sentence, beginning with "any member whose incurred expenses," we use the improper form of "whose" there. I don't know, maybe that's an oversight, but...
No.
It's "any member who is..."
Means "who has."
Okay. I'm sorry. I read it as "who is incurred expenses."
It can work both ways.
That confused me, yeah, with no apostrophe.
That's what she's saying, it should be "who has."
I mean, it's a really tiny thing. It doesn't really change the meaning.
It would be more formal and perhaps correct to break it up and say "who has," but...
No, it should be "whose," W-H-O-S-E, "whose incurred expenses exceed..."
Mm-hmm, exceeds.
So, it's...
You got, you need a lot of courage to start a grammar discussion on this Board, I'll tell you why, Mr. Grunendike.
It should be "who's," W-H-O-S-E. You won't go there again, will you?
You're actually right. It was sitting properly here.
That's right.
Well done, Justin.
So, it's, so "whose," W-H-O-S-E, is there consensus to make that change? All right, we're making progress here. Is there any other discussion on the, on the policy? If not, all those in favor of the approval of the second read of policy, BHD? Are there any opposed? Motion passes five to two, and the student member concurs with the majority side. Thank you, gentlemen. Next on the agenda is consideration of the second reading to rescind policy BAA and exhibit BAA-E.
Thank you. During the Board of Education's public business meeting conducted on October 1st, the Board discussed policy BHD, which is entitled "Board Member," excuse me. That actually was on October 15th. The Board entertained a first reading to rescind policy BAA. Since the first reading, the proposed changes were placed on the website, and members of the committee were invited to provide comments. The Board did receive comments on the proposed changes to this policy. This matter is now being presented to the Board for its consideration. Thank you.
Is there a motion pertaining to the second read rescinding policy BAA and BAA-E?
Mr. President, I move to approve the second reading to rescind policy BAA entitled "Evaluation of School Board, Board Self-Evaluation," and as exhibit BAA-E entitled "School Board Self-Evaluation: A Comprehensive Guide."
Motion made by Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ridenhour. Just for the information of members as we have this discussion, we, there's been a lot of discussion about it. I want to be sure that everybody has an opportunity to speak once before anybody gets the opportunity to speak twice. I want to be sure that everybody's voice is heard, and that we proceed then to act on the motion. Mrs. Fisher, you have the right to speak first.
Well, I just, I just say that I tried to reach a compromise on this particular issue. It didn't work. I do agree with some other Board members that have suggested that this needs to be a practice rather than a policy.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there any other comments or discussion? Mrs. Williams?
Policy BAA calls for the members of the Board as a whole to appraise the work and performance of the Board as a whole. It's hard for me to understand why this policy has been ignored for years and is now about to be rescinded. Currently, our school system has policy which addresses the evaluation of each of its employee groups, the superintendent, and the Board itself. I maintain that it's not policy BAA, but the implementation of the policy that's the problem. To vote to rescind policy BAA because members of this Board are fearful of what might be said to them or about them or to or about another member of this Board would be wrong. The question should be what's in the best interest of our students, our school system, and our community. Clearly, accountability and continuous improvement accomplished through an annual self-evaluation would be in the best interest of all. Having policy BAA would enable us to do that and ensure that it would be done. I've heard from and/or spoken with past and present employees of the school system, including ESPs, teachers, administrators, parents of students, and two former members of the Board of Education. All of those individuals have expressed support for maintaining policy BAA and support for a Board self-evaluation. So, I'll be voting in opposition to rescinding policy BAA. I believe the policy should be maintained, and this Board should commit to work together to determine a process that will allow us self-assessment and will allow us to lead by example. I see the Board self-appraisal working in combination with the superintendent's evaluation, student achievement data, and stakeholder input to move our system ahead.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mrs. Harsman?
I too have heard from many people in the community, and they ask me questions that I cannot answer. I do not know why we should be above an evaluation. I do not know why. We will not review what we have done and see if we cannot improve. I have no control over the vote, which, again, you need for to vote for or against something. I will, however, most likely be in the minority again, and I hope for the last time, voting for this policy to remain as opposed to being rescinded because I still see no value in doing away with it.
Thank you, Mrs. Harsman. Are there other comments?
Mr. President.
Mr. Ridenhour?
Just a couple of things. And I think, you know, we tend to hear from those people who are in concert with our opinions. So, I have heard from people who said that they do not see the necessity of evaluation, self-evaluation. I think one person made a comment in the newspaper that self-evaluations are self-serving. And they can be, and they can be a variety of other things. But I think there's a misconception when we continually talk about other groups within the system who are evaluated. And that is very true. It is completely accurate, and I don't dispute that. Teachers are evaluated by principals. Principals are evaluated by supervisory staff. Supervisory staff is evaluated by the senior staff. The senior staff is evaluated by the superintendent. The superintendent is evaluated by the Board of Education. There is a hierarchy that goes along there. There is no hierarchy above us except the electing public who put us in these chairs. It is up to them if we are doing a job that is benefiting their children and benefiting the community. So, and just to make it perfectly clear, teachers never evaluate teachers. It is not allowed under the collective bargaining agreement. So consequently, the argument that teachers are evaluated, yes, they are, but they are not evaluated by their peers. And I understand that we are working and operating and trying to look at this as a collective evaluation. Unfortunately, and we have done this in the past, it is not something that just disappeared. We have done this in the past, and unfortunately, it was not an evaluation of the collective. It ended up becoming evaluations of how one individual Board member felt about the performance of another individual Board member. And that is not healthy for the collective. So consequently, I do support this. There is still nothing to stop us from working on a process or coming up with something that allows us to do a self-evaluation. We're just taking a policy out that we are not following at this point in time that is unnecessary. So, you know, I do support this. I believe that it is unnecessary, and it is not set up and can't be set up in a manner that is consistent with other groups that are being evaluated within the Board of Education system.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Are there other comments? Mrs. Breitman?
Sure, I'll give it a try. There's some misconception that BAA is the beginning and ending of everything this Board does. And reflecting on this in preparation for today's meeting, I thought back to the very first date, July 16th, that it was brought forward. And you would be amazed if you look at all of the different agenda during all the different meetings and committee work. I just made a short list of everything this Board has done. It's been an amazing concept. We've signed salary agreements with all of our bargaining units. We've tracked new assessments, curriculum standards. We've worked on the new Ed Center in Downsville Pike, contracts for numerous instruction, professional development facility, transportation, schematic design for West City School, policy rev, and guess what? We've been working on vision and mission and core goals. We've been doing the work that we were elected to do. We don't need BAA to tell us how to do our work. We've been doing it collectively, effectively, and efficiently. I would prefer to see this if we want to sit down yearly in a retreat to set it up as a best practice. Nothing wrong with that. We can do that, we do that all the time. We didn't have a policy about a vision and mission, and yet we came together as a Board, reached consensus, and said, "You know, we really need to move forward on this." I think we're all adults here. I think we know what our job is. It's stated in state law and COMAR, and I'm going to rescind this and happy to do so. And I'm hoping that we've all learned that our job, we all know our job, we're very capable of doing our job, and I'm happy to work with this group to set up a best practice going forward.
Thank you, Mrs. Breitman. Are there other comments?
Very briefly, Mr. President. Sitting in my 15th year on this Board, I've been through the self-evaluation as prescribed in the old policy. People could make me feel good when we were doing this, or make the entire Board feel good. They could also make you feel like you were in with your first load of pumpkins from the farm, that nothing was happening because of your performance and so forth. My, my comment is simply this. We, hopefully as professionals and mature people, can get together, whether it be in a debriefing type of setting or whatever, and say, "What are we doing that's working? What are we doing that's not working?" And not have to be involved in a complicated process where you check off a checklist and say, you know, "This is good, this is good, this is not good." So, I'm, I'm going to wrap it up with that, and I will be voting for the rescission of this policy.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. I'll just add my comments as well. And I'd like to start them sort of connecting with what some of my colleagues have said, which is, what is it that we're voting on? This is a vote on whether to have a policy on self-evaluation. It's not a vote on whether self-evaluation is good. It's not a vote on whether self-evaluations in the past have worked or not worked. It's not a vote on what self-evaluation in the future might look like. It's a vote on whether we, as a Board, are going to have a policy specifically on this topic. Unfortunately, I think during the discussion, somehow those two things have become conflated. And as an example of that, you need no look further than the Herald-Mails headline last week about the door, shutting the door, about the Board shutting the door on self-evaluation. We're absolutely not shutting the door on it, whether we have a policy or not. The question is, will we have a policy? There's also been a number of comments about if we don't have a policy, if we rescind the policy, that we're somehow being selfish, that we're cheating the system, that we lack credibility, that we're not acting in good faith. There's also been things written that policies are being used by other Boards quite successfully in Maryland. So, I decided to go and check, and spent a good bit of time going through the policy manuals for all the 23 other LEAs in the state of Maryland. And what I found is that six counties of those 23 have a policy of any kind on self-evaluation. Five of those counties require a self-evaluation at a specified time or in a specified timeframe. To be honest, there were two counties whose webpages were not functional enough that I could find their policy manual, so that's why these numbers aren't going to add up to 23. There were 15 counties that have no policy on self-evaluation whatsoever. Clearly, many of these other counties conduct self-evaluations without a policy. A colleague referred to both Prince George's and Frederick Counties conducting self-evaluations recently. One has a policy mandating that a self-evaluation will be done, and when it will be done, that's Frederick County. The other, Prince George's County, has no policy on self-evaluation at all. So, the question is not whether, the question is whether we will have a policy, not whether we can, should, or ever will conduct a self-evaluation in the future. So, let's go to that question of whether we should have a policy. Based on the votes that we've taken, there are clearly some on this Board who believe that we shouldn't have such a policy. And there are clearly some who believe that we should have a policy. I've basically thought that while the Board could have a self-evaluation that could be productive under the right circumstances, we don't necessarily need a policy in order to do it. And Mrs. Fisher offered compromise language in the policy committee a couple of months ago, and in the spirit of compromise, I supported her language and voted to send it out a committee on a two-to-one vote. Her language was very similar to the language in Alag... Her language was very similar to the language in Allegheny's policy, Allegheny County's policy. And I have that policy here. It talks about the Board of Education periodically can establish objectives, conduct a self-evaluation when it deems necessary, doesn't require a deadline, doesn't mandate when it will occur. Very similar to what Mrs. Fisher proposed for the board. When it came to full board considerations, she offered a motion to adopt the language. As president, of course, I cannot offer motions or seconds. Her motion failed for lack of a second, and that tells me two things. First thing it tells me is that those who don't support having a policy on self-evaluation and didn't offer a second didn't believe that having a policy, even with the compromise language, made sense. The second thing it told me is that those who do support having a policy didn't offer a second either. Now, with Mrs. Fisher's motion and my support in committee, it was clear that the compromise language needed just two votes to pass beyond R2. But those who didn't, but those who support having a policy didn't support the compromise either, and that's fine. That is their right. I will support today the rescission of policy BAA. I did some more research. There is no other elected body in Washington County, not the county commissioners, not the delegation, not any municipality that has a self-evaluation policy. Fifteen school boards in the state of Maryland do not have a self-evaluation policy. I do not believe that this fact means that any of them shuts the door on evaluation. I don't believe it means any of them is selfish. I don't believe it means any of them are out to cheat the system, lack credibility, or believe that they are above scrutiny. By my vote, I don't think any of those things about us either. I don't believe the board believes that about itself. Some may continue to disagree, and that's fine, and that is absolutely their right. But ultimately, it will be up to the voters to decide, and that's as it should be. Are there other comments? Ms. Hargman?
I have just one question, and I was wondering if you had found out in any of your research how recently other, other boards that do not have a policy have conducted the self-evaluation because with our policy, we have not done it for more than five years. So I'm just wondering if, if the non-written policy worked better for other communities than the written policy has for us? Do you happen to know? And how recently?
I have no idea, other than anecdotally that Prince George's County conducted a self-evaluation last month.
And Frederick, I know, was doing theirs.
And Frederick, but Frederick has a policy, Prince George's does not.
Yeah, and someone else, I think, had said they were working on one when we were at the MADE conference, but I don't remember who it was. Okay.
Are there other comments? If not, the question is on Mrs. Fisher's motion to rescind the policy on second read. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes five to two, and the student member concurs. Next item on the agenda is new business, consideration of Board of Education Advisory Committee appointments. Mr. Criswell?
President Harding's, members of the board, Dr. Wilcox. I'm here today to seek approval of three new facility and enrollment advisory committee members. Recommended for your approval are the appointments of Michael Faith and Reverend Ann Wetherholt to represent the Hancock area, and Mr. Aaron Williams to fill one vacancy for the North Hagerstown area.
Thank you, Mr. Criswell. Is there a motion to approve the appointments to the facilities enrollment advisory committee?
Yes, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Breitman. Are there, is there any discussion regarding the appointments? If not, all those in favor of the appointments? Are any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero, and the student member concurs. Thank you, Mr. Criswell. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Good afternoon, President Harding's, Dr. Wilcox, and members of the board. We have 12 procurement items on the agenda this afternoon. Give you a quick overview, and then turn the meeting back for your questions. I have folks who are sitting in the background waiting for those questions.
That makes you think the meeting questions.
They weren't here for our dynamic discussion?
Forgive me if some of these reports take a little longer to present than others. We have quite a mixed bag here this afternoon. RFQ 2014-27 is for the solicitation for quotes from five architectural firms that hold contracts with the school board under our on-call architectural engineering contract. WCPS has been allocated $605,000 from the state to make security improvements. This design project would provide a plan to modify entrances at the main offices and entrances along, at the schools, at 15 schools, to improve the management of visitor access for security reasons. Four of the firms submitted price proposals, and staff is recommending to accept the lowest cost proposal submitted by Prophet and Associates of Frederick in a lump sum total of $69,555. Second item on the agenda is RFP 2014-14. This solicitation is for the design, coordination, supply, installation, integration, user training of a cooperatively conceived audiovisual system for the meeting areas at the administration center. We received two proposals from Life Safety Solutions Integrators and Visual Sound Company, and an evaluation committee who reviewed those proposals. And the two companies made oral presentations of their proposals to the evaluation team. The evaluation team included the superintendent, the deputy superintendent, the director of information, management, and instructional technology, a manager in the IT department, and the director of maintenance and operations, and I also participated in that committee. The proposals were evaluated based on the proposed equipment in the mix of the system, the extent of integration within the building of their proposal, and how well the solution meets the functional needs of the building staff. The proposal submitted by Visual Sound Company was rated the highest by the evaluation committee. Subsequently, staff began working with the engineer at Visual Sound Company to evaluate opportunities for cost reduction within the proposal. The visual sound proposal repurposes existing monitors, whiteboards, and cameras from this facility into the new solution for the administrative center. The contract would provide audiovisual systems for the designated conference rooms as well as the control equipment, allowing for the continuation of televising the board education meetings in the auditorium space of the new administrative center. The procurement review committee discussed the bid results and is recommending that the board approve the proposal submitted by Visual Sound Company of Baltimore, Maryland in a total amount of $484,882. Included in the bid packet is a summary of the equipment by floor that we would be receiving under that proposal. Third item on the consent agenda is for professional nursing services. WCPS does have a need for contracted professional nursing services, which are supplemental to the nursing professionals that we are employed by the school system and are also provided under the Meritas Medical Center contract. The nurses are needed for a variety of assignments, primarily as substitute nurses for students enrolled in programs operated by the Special Education Department. Contracted effective January 1 of 2014 through June of 2015, an 18-month period, and is subject to renewal for up to three additional one-year periods. It establishes fixed hourly rates for RNs, LPNs, and CNAs, which are provided in the board report, and is recommended for award to Maxim Healthcare Services of Towson, Maryland, and Delta T Group of Columbia, Maryland. Number four, carpeting for the administrative center. We contacted Shaw Carpet Group to request a price proposal under the cooperative bid that was issued on behalf of the Keystone Purchasing Network. That contract was competitively bid and awarded to Shaw Contract Group at fixed rates of discount by carpet type based upon the style of carpet selected. In addition to providing carpet, the contract includes installation through a local installation company as a subcontractor. Staff worked with Shaw Carpet to develop the plan for carpeting, and what is being presented to you this afternoon is the final proposal. It would provide carpeting for the areas that are designated to be carpeted in the new administrative center. The procurement review committee is recommending award of this order to Shaw Carpet Group utilizing the KPN 2001-001-02 contract at a total cost of $212,847.99. Item five is requisition 163883. A copy of that requisition is provided to the board. This is for network hardware, a disk expansion unit and blade server, and the management software for operating those, that equipment. Additional disk storage space and faster processing speed is needed to allow for remote access to the new student information system via the Internet. In the past, IBM server equipment, which has gone out to bid, has not resulted in lower pricing than was previously quoted by the WCPS business partner, who is the same company that's being recommended for award of this contract, excuse me, this requisition today. Award is recommended to Tamalpais Group in the total amount of $59,232. Bid 2014-31 is for an automotive scissor lift rack for the Washington County Technical High School. This bid includes providing the equipment, delivering, and installation of a replacement rack for the automotive repair program. The current scissor lift rack is more than 20 years old, and it's in poor condition. We solicited bids, but we only received one bid in return, and we're recommending to go forward with that bid to Chesapeake Automotive Equipment of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, providing for a Hunter Engineering Lift with the lighting kit at a total cost of $25,697. Item seven, the board is currently under contract with Control Systems Incorporated of Hagerstown to design, install, and service pneumatic, electronic, and computerized temperature controls, process controls, energy management, and building automation systems throughout the county. Recently, the board approved a purchase of the variable air volume boxes for the administrative center. This purchase will allow us to have those, that equipment installed and integrated along with some other work that's needed to the control system at the administrative center. This purchase is part of a system-wide standardization plan for utilizing centralized management of climate control throughout our buildings. Purchase order KK5256 is submitted approval based on urgency of need and preauthorization by the board, and is, was placed to Control Systems Incorporated in the total amount of Item eight, 100 laptop computers are needed for the replacement of aging computers that are in the hands of teachers and students. Staff recommends approval of requisition 166229 to Hartford Computer Group of Columbia, Maryland, in the total amount of $72,200. Item nine, WCPS solicited and received two proposals for the labor to demount and reinstall walls on the second floor of the administrative center. Proposals were received from hyperspace and biolec environments. Both quotations were based on utilizing the same subcontractor, Potomac Valley Building Restoration of Hagerstown. To ensure progress of work within the overall renovation of the building, that contract was authorized and a purchase order was issued on October 25th to the lowest-cost bidder hyperspace. Staff is recommending that the board also approve this contract for labor only in the total amount of $82,000. Item nine, two manual requisitions were submitted to the purchasing department to upgrade the security cameras at North Hagerstown High School at a total cost of $29,255.50 and South Hagerstown High School at a cost of $36,750, utilizing unit rates that the board previously approved under bid 201343 for security cameras, systems, and service. Atlantic Security is the contract holder under that contract. Item 11, bid 201219, we'd provide for the maintenance and repair of approximately 265 pieces of refrigeration equipment throughout the school system. Equipment includes milk coolers, walk-in refrigerators, freezers, ice cream freezers, et cetera. Under the contract, preventative maintenance services are conducted twice annually, and repairs are performed on a time and material basis. The procurement review committee recommends approval of a second annual renewal of this contract with Ty Construction of Chambersburg, Pennsylvania, effective January 1 through December 31st of 2014 at a cost of $8,800, plus repairs on a time and materials basis as shown in the summary of that renewal in the board package. Final item, I think, is item 12. On October 15th, the Board of Education awarded bid 201422 to install fiber optic cable and hardware at the administrative center to Henkels &amp; McCoy at a cost of $76,215. Included in that work scope were fiber optic cables, terminations, and markers, performance testing, and limited site work, along with a 25-year warranty. The implementation plan that was specified would have installed 96 strand fiber along aerial attachments to utility poles, some of which are owned by First Energy, Potomac Edison, and others are owned by the Hagerstown City Light Department. That original route plan has not been, was later determined is not viable. There are 12 utility poles along that installation plan that would need to be replaced, and we learned that the cost of replacing those 12 poles is just prohibitively expensive. Staff immediately began working with First Energy, RHL Engineering, and Henkels &amp; McCoy to develop a more economical plan for routing our fiber. The new route bypasses those 12 poles. The new route is longer than the original, and it does involve some underground boring in sections along the public roadway. As you would expect, the cost of that is a little more than, considerably more than the original bid. That said, we are still waiting on some of the final approvals, but are feeling fairly confident, or we wouldn't be here today, that we're going to be able to move forward. We requested a revision to the price proposal from Henkels &amp; McCoy, and I have that copy of that for the board as information along with the board report. Staff is recommending on this bid that we change the original award from Henkels &amp; McCoy of York, Pennsylvania in a revised amount of $121,355. And I think I hit all 12 items.
Thank you, Ms. Breitman. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? You want to read the?
Yes. Sorry about that. All right. I move to approve. I move to approve RFQ 201427 for design services to Profit Associates at $69,555. RFP 201414 for audiovisual system to Visual Sound Company at $484,882. RFQ 201421 for nursing services to Maxim Healthcare Services, Inc., and Delta T Group, Maryland, at proposed hourly rates. KPN 201001-02 for carpet to administrative center at $212,847.99. Requisition number 163883 for IBM server equipment to Tamalpais? Help me there. Group, Inc., at $59,232. Bid 201431 for automotive life to Chesapeake Automotive at $25,697. Purchase order KK 5256 for building controls project to Control Systems, Inc., at $177,272. Requisition number 166229 for laptop computers to Hartford Computer Group at $72,200. Purchase order KK 5432 for labor to move walls at administrative center to Hyperspace at $82,000. Requisition for security cameras for North and South Hagerstown High Schools to Atlantic Security at $29,255.50 and $36,750 respectively. Bid 201219, second renewal for maintenance and repair to refrigeration equipment by Ty Construction at fixed unit prices. And bid 201422 for a change in award due to a modification of the fiber route to Henkels &amp; McCoy at a revised total of $121,355.
Good work. Motion by Mrs. Breiten. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Please, somebody second it.
Restate the motion. Is there any discussion or any questions?
Restate it.
Ms. Fisher?
On control systems, if you're on your iPad, it's page 23 of 40. Under their scope of work, there are 11 items that they exclude. Some of those items are tangible materials. Others have to do with the labor of installing those items. Are these things, obviously, then we're going to have to rebid for someone else to do?
My understanding, this will complete the controls work that's needed under the administrative center.
Rob is shaking his head yes to that.
Okay. Then that's the official answer.
Whoops. Okay.
All the items that are listed or excluded are already covered under another contract, so it's already taken care of. They're just coming in, doing the hookup that takes care of the control mechanisms. But the fans and the motors, those types of things are already taken care of.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Are there other questions on consent agenda items? Ms. Breiten?
Number one, the, I'm not going to go through all of them, sorry. The design security improvements at 15 schools, and it says fund source capital budget. From reading the information, I just want to be sure the public is aware, because this is just the design portion of a fairly large project, which is $915,000. And of that, $605,000 is being provided by the state for security to schools. So the state is picking up a significant portion of this project. I guess my question is, out of the capital budget, I assume there's local money in this as well? I wouldn't want to not give, the answer is yes. Okay. So this is specific local share on that. Okay, great. Number two.
Do you want to explain where the money's?
I'm sorry.
It requires a local match. There's not a specific designated from the commission. The commission gives the blocking money to be used towards capital projects, and we intend to use a portion of that money.
A portion of that.
I was going to say maybe just $605,000 to security.
It wasn't specified to be used, the county money, for security. It was just a general capital dollars.
I think, as you recall, we had investor discussion, a portion of that money was used for investor project, a portion of money that they provided and were putting towards just other capital projects.
That's the money. That's the pot of money there. Thank you. I appreciate it. I was a little concerned at first that maybe we'd had to bump some other projects on the priority list to do this, to get the matching money to do this. So that was where that concern originated. So thank you for that clarification. Number two. If you look at 2, 4, 7, 9, and 12, they're all having to do with the administrative center and money that we authorized to be spent from the fund balance. How are we tracking, sort of keeping up with the expenditures from that? I know we had set aside a certain amount from that.
Why do you ask me to?
We have an account set aside where I think Chris has transferred money into account. David Brannenberg updates the account. As we have items like this that are specifically noted for the Downsfield Building, they're charged against that account.
I just think it's important for everyone to know that we're keeping an eye on the ball there and staying within budget as much as possible.
We keep our eye on every dollar, not just these.
Every penny, every penny.
I think it is important to say to the committee that, you know, as we are progressing, we paid $5.5 million. We said that we would have between $6.5 million and $7 million in renovation expense. I think it's fair to say we are within those numbers at this time. We don't have any sense that we have a major overrun coming ahead of us. We've gotten through a few surprises. We are looking at, you know, one of the things that people often forget is that this building had $5 to $10 million, depending on whose numbers you believe, in renovations that we would have had to do to stay here. So we are conscious of the fact that we have to spend some maintenance dollars as well as budgeted dollars for this, but we're going to get there.
Thank you. Just clarification. Last one, the number three, the contracted services for professional nursing. This subject tends to give me heartburn, and I'm not quite sure where, but help me understand whether these new, the nursing staff, it's saying in the cover sheet that they would specifically be used for special ed needs, which, for maybe not the correct terminology, children with cognitive issues, more so than emotional or mental issues, health issues. So here, I'm going at this maybe wrong, but I look at our memorandum of understanding with Meritas to supply nurses to all of our schools. But Meritas does not, in their hospital, will not serve as children from zero to 18. They don't have the facility, they don't have the providers, and they don't, they don't do mental health, mental and emotional behavioral health issues. I guess my question is, will these nurses coming in have mental health training? And where I link that to is if the new student discipline regs go through and we're mandated to provide behavioral services, will, can we get a twofer for some of these nursing? Can they also handle mental and behavioral health? Sorry for the question.
Freeman might have to correct me if I'm wrong. This is not a bid I'm real familiar with, but we have two different things we're talking about. We have our Meritas contract for our nursing services, for general nursing services for all of our students. Then within the Washington County budget, we have 16 or 17 nurses of Washington County Public Schools employs for fragile children and children with special needs. This contractual service obligation, as far as I recall from the procurement review process, is to simply provide substitutes for those 16 or 17 nurses. We also have some on-call people that we call, and this is our backup to our on-call substitute list. This is really just to provide contractual substitutes for the people that we directly employ. This is not for the Meritas substitutes, and they don't provide additional services beyond that of a substitute.
Beyond that. Very good. Thank you for that.
I will say, I think it's also been used for long-term temporary assignments from time to time over the years. We had handled this as a bid, so we've had a contract.
See, I haven't seen this come before us, so it was new, and I was thinking it was precipitated by some new situation.
No, the expenditures under the contract really aren't that, don't rise to the level of requiring Board approval. Haven't in the past.
In the past.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there other questions on the consent agenda? Mr. Bailey?
The fiber optics issue looks like there's going to be considerable negotiations involved in getting that accomplished. Is that going to delay the opening of that facility?
We hope the answer to that is no. Our initial discussion with local engineers and our local office, we had a route off picked down, as the Board's aware, two weeks ago. They approved a contract. We had budgeted about $150,000 for that fiber run, and that bid committed about $75,000 that the Board originally approved. We believe that contractor had some materials that had to be used for a government contract based on the way they procured it, and that's why costs would come in so low. Since that time, we heard from their corporate office in South Carolina, North Carolina, that I think they were kind of taking advantage of the opportunity for this very small line that we were adding to their pole to replace large poles with larger poles and move all the wires, et cetera. We were hearing prices somewhere between $25,000 and $50,000 per pole, somewhere between 10 and 12 poles. So staff immediately looked at an alternative route that'd be cheaper. So we're going to use a lot of our fiber conduit that goes through the South High Campus or under Oak Ridge Drive or under Downsfield Pike, and the only issues that are really standing in our way right now is a conversation with Verizon. We need to move some of their lines that are on poles. They don't own any of the poles, but we have to have their permission to, they somehow own some space on the pole or some contractual agreement with First Energy. And you have to have an agreement to go over top of railway, railroad lines. And we already have fiber across the railroad line. We'll probably just kind of wrap the current line that we have, but we have to wait on those things. So it's kind of dealing with bureaucracy of two very large organizations that we sometimes feel are far, far away, but we're hoping to get all those things straightened out.
I think I hear you saying, Mr. Michael, the potential exists for some delay.
I think, not as a result of money, but as a result of just getting through the paperwork in that process. We do have a backup plan that won't delay us removing into the building. It would require us to rent fiber, and we'd operate the building just like the school from this location. It would act as if a school rather than our main hub.
Thank you for your thorough answer.
Are there other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Not the question is on Mrs. Breitman's motion to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. The student member concurs. Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Next item on the agenda is the first reading of revised policy IGL and IKC and IKF. Given two of the four guests up there, I'll remind you that this item is adjourned for five minutes.
What are the chances?
Just need Dad Boyd.
We've had other items on today's agenda that were scheduled for five minutes as well.
That's why we'd like to keep this one to five minutes.
Good afternoon. The Policy Committee and members of the academic staff conducted a review of policy IKC, which is entitled graduation requirements, policy IKF, which is entitled class rankings, and grade point average, and policy IGL, which is entitled student activities eligibility high schools. Policy IKC, it is being recommended that this policy be changed to provide that the date for computation of class honors is to occur at the end of the third marking period instead of what is now in the policy, which requires the computation to be conducted at the end of grade report number two. The policy was also amended to make it clear that the process for the designation of the valve victorian and the salute auditorium is set forth in policy IKV. Policy IKF, with regard to policy IKF, it is being recommended that the language that appears in paragraph A4 of this policy be stricken because it references certain assessments that are no longer required. Certain stylistic changes to this policy are being recommended. Policy IGL, it is being recommended that in paragraph 3C and 8, that the reference to the six-week marking period be changed to provide for a nine-week marking period.
Is there a motion to approve the first read of policies stated?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. President.
Second by Mr. Bailey. Is there any discussion?
Just one thing, and I, you know, this has always been a bugaboo for me with eligibility. I think there's really, in cases, some cases, some inconsistencies. I don't know how we ever get rid of the inconsistencies, but, you know, for example, eligibility, let's see, shall be determined except in the first marking period. In other words, you can, if you fail two classes, you're ineligible. If you do that in the first, second, or third marking period. If you do it in the fourth marking period, you have two ways to avoid ineligibility. In other words, you can, your final grade becomes the grade that matters, and you also have summer to, you know, do credit recovery and get your grade up. Yeah, that bothers me a little bit. Not that I want kids to be ineligible, but I don't want them to be ineligible. And we're going to go down to the other little bugaboo I have in the next policy, but I'm not sure how to deal with that. I'm not sure how to make that equitable because it's not. There's no, now in particular, if we don't have a six-week window, it's now, you're now ineligible for nine weeks. You've lost a season completely. And for some kids who struggle in school, and some kids who are in school only, not only because, but it plays a part in it, athletics or whatever the case might be, what's the purpose? What's the reason? You know, to keep trying. So I struggle to vote against it, I struggle to vote for it. It is one of those things that has always been, you know, a problem for me. I coached for 30 years. I know how hard I had to work to keep track of kids to, you know, hopefully they maintain their eligibility, but I think, you know, that one part of that is, has always been bothersome for me because there is an unfairness. If you are an athlete or someone that participates, and your activity takes place in the first marking period, and you screw up the fourth marking period, you know, you have an escape clause. You have a get out of jail card, and nobody else does. So I'll sit here and listen maybe for 10 seconds for somebody else to speak, but in that 10 seconds, I'm going to have to make a decision on how I'm going to vote on this. And right now, I got to say that I just don't like eligibility. I have problems with it, so I'm probably going to vote against it. No offense to any of you guys.
Are there other comments? Ms. Harshman?
I just had a question about number three. B, it says, "A student whose schedule is less than four credits in a semester must receive a passing grade in each credit course in order to be eligible." How many schools do we still have that are in semesters? How many schools do we still have that are in semesters?
It are just four, just Tech High.
Just Tech High. Okay, so there is still a need to have the semester item in there. That's what I was wondering. Thank you.
Mr. Grunendike?
I mean, I don't really have a question as much, just clarification. Are we on I K C yet, or are we just looking at them individually, first of all?
We're looking I G D.
I G D, okay, then. Should, well, I do have a question then. Should we say, should we put in something else under three that says a certain number of credits in a year then, since we're going to a year, a year-long, year-long classes rather than semester-based classes? Because, I mean, it seems to me that that would be more appropriate, given that almost all of our schools are on that.
There are still some semesterized courses, but I'm looking to Rick. That's the reason.
Yes, we still have some, although we only have one school on a fourth-period day, so to speak, we do have courses that end in January and other, and then start new courses in January.
For example, some of our arts classes are semesterized courses, and I don't.
And I mean, I'm not saying get rid of B, but maybe put in something else that talks about year-long classes.
Well, A might kind of address that because it says who fails two or more courses in a marking period. So that would be all the others, correct? That's based on marking period as opposed to semester.
What, I think what it's intended to do, students who do not have a full-time schedule don't have the same, if you want to put it this way, luxury of being able to fail one of them. And typically, that's because sometimes students who have less than a full schedule might be in a work program or other programs, but they are in a situation where they must pass all their courses to stay on course to graduate. There's no room for error. And so, again, the eligibility is meant to act as an incentive for doing well in class. And that's why I think there's always been the requirement that if you have less than a full schedule, that you have to pass all of your classes. And I think that's how that is supposed to read.
Can I ask you?
Sure.
I apologize. And again, you've got one that touched me. I think we're all smart enough. I think all you guys are smart enough, and I certainly think teachers are smart. There's got to be a better way. There's got to be a way that we can, you know, a kid that's struggling or may fail and, you know, doesn't necessarily lose his eligibility for an extended period of time or maybe not even lose it at all. You know, I think that we can work on tutoring programs or required tutoring. You know, when I was coaching, my kids, you know, we had a late practice, they were in my room after school for study hall. I mean, there are ways that we can work to make sure our kids do well without it having to be punitive all the time. And to me, this is punitive, and I think it's counterproductive. So, you know, I've already made up my mind.
I can't say that this policy already exists, but really what we're looking at are, should we change it to match the marking?
Oh, I understand. I understand. I mean, my problem is with the entire policy.
Right. And I can say, just comment that.
I'm good with these.
We do, we do have the principals in discussion with Eric Michael about looking at how other school districts do this because there are school districts that give students other ways of becoming eligible again, and they're allowed, in some, one of our neighboring school districts, they're allowed to continue practicing. They just can't play the games until they reach that requirement. And so it is something that we've been kicking around for, for a couple of years now, and I think probably a good time to really, now that we, we've lost the advantage of having six-week marking periods.
But we've lost the advantage of having six-week marking periods, but we have four-and-a-half-week midterm reports. Why could we not use those? I mean, it seemed, to Mr. Reidenhour's point, nine weeks is an eternity if you're a varsity athlete or you're a, because this works for orchestra or band students as well. I mean, it would seem to me that we could perhaps say the four-and-a-half weeks was the midpoint because we are requiring a midterm grade. That's also more in concert with keeping our parents informed and having them involved in their children's education.
I would certainly support the interims, you know, the policy change. The interims could make a student eligible. What, what I would have concerns about is if we used it to make a student ineligible.
No, I think to make them eligible, so that if, if, at the end of the nine weeks, you are, and here's the example, let's say that you are a varsity football player who also plays basketball or wrestles. If you become ineligible at the end of the nine weeks, you might still be able to practice with your team, although your time might be better spent at home hitting the books for a while, but four-and-a-half weeks later, you could at least participate in that season, and you wouldn't miss, really, what amount of two, nine weeks of the next season.
If the board passed that policy, I certainly have my support.
I'm looking forward to seeing what you guys think.
Well, this is the first read. The first read.
I understand.
Mrs. Brightman was trying to get in.
What you were talking about with Mr. Michael, what you guys think. I'm anxious to see it.
Mr. Ayers, is, is this really zero tolerance? Is there no case-by-case? Is there any opportunity for the A.D. or the coach or whomever to sit down with a student and look them in the eye and say, "This is the consequence, but if you do X, Y, Z," I mean, is there any, is there any room to maneuver in here? Because the school-based people know their children.
They also know that they run for 2,000 yards in a year, and you might get different considerations.
Right, and undue pressure could be put on.
You want to be careful there, because there'd be a lot of pressure put on the administrator. I understand you're trying to err on the side of a kid who has crazy life circumstances.
Or whatever. I just have always had a problem with zero tolerance on any type of discipline issue.
I can't say, though, if there's some extenuating circumstance, that teachers sometimes are aware of that and will choose, rather than to give the student a failing grade, to give them an incomplete, which buys the student an additional 10 days to correct whatever problem. So that's for any student, not just for athletes.
Understood.
And so, you know, it's not as though there's no way, you know, if a student had a big project due and it blew off his porch, you know, or whatever, where he had his, you know, and he wasn't able to turn it in, there are, you know, for those kind of situations, teachers have given students incompletes rather than failing grades so that they weren't deemed ineligible.
Mr. Bailey?
Just a comment, and not intended as a curveball, but I would anticipate that in future years, we're going to see homeschooled students participating in activities in schools. How are we going to determine their eligibility?
Yeah.
That's just a, you know, a passing comment, but I think it's something we have to start thinking about.
We're having, there's a lot of pressure going on statewide and nationwide to allow private schools to compete against public schools, and sometimes the private schools, that would be fine, but other times there are private schools that allow students who wouldn't be eligible age-wise or experience-wise to play for a public high school, to play for the private. But there's an agreement that they can sign that says they will follow the same rules. And as long as they do that, and they're honest and they comply, you know, those kind of things can happen. But as far as the homeschool, I have seen that in the, you know, in literature where that's becoming a court issue and issue around the country.
Mrs. Harsman, did you have another comment? You were trying to get in before.
I just had been concerned about this previously when I was at Tech High because the students there were marked ineligible based on the mid-grading period report, the interim report. And at the time, I questioned that because the other high schools were not, and the kids at Tech had the whole year to catch up their grades, whereas the ones at the other schools had only that semester. So at that time, I questioned whether the interim should, should count to disqualify a student, but nothing changed, unfortunately. And so some of the kids were kept out of extracurricular activities because of that. So I'm, I'm not sure that that isn't a possibility, to look at the interims and see if they could get back in.
Well, we do, you know, with our new grading policy, there is an interim now, every marking period for every student, and that's what Dr. Wilcox was referring to, that we could use that, that it would enable students to become eligible but not be used to make them ineligible.
Yeah, well, that's what I was, I was agreeing with you, but I was coming around the long end here.
Well, and on the sixth marking period day, there were interims that came out at the same time as grades.
Yes.
Unfortunately, I was on the losing end of the vote that decided to treat them like regular grades. I agree with you because I mean, my point was that a student could get an A every single marking period and an A for the course and be ineligible all year.
All year.
Just because of interim.
Exactly.
So I never liked that either.
So I fought for that, too. It's nice to know that which side you were on at that time. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? So this, the motion is on the approval of all three of the policies, so just so we're clear, it's the first read.
First read.
All three, first. All three, first read.
Well, no, no, if it's on all three, I just want to make a quick comment, if you don't mind, because we're already past the five minutes Dr. Wilcox allocated. I got to tell you, I hate the 069. I have always hated the fact that we do not have a D. I think a D is as much a deterrent to a kid as an F because Fs can be recovered. I think, you know, we spend a hell of a lot of money, pardon me, we spend a lot of money on summer recovery programs that may not be necessary, you know, if we go back to that, plus those kids, the kids 60 to 69 that want to go to college and only have one point on their GPA. To me, that's much, that's more punishment than the two-point that you recover in three weeks. So I've always thought a D was more beneficial than it was harmful. So something for thinking about in the future.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes, I, I would like to ask a few questions about I K F, graduation requirements. Looking at the high school certificate requirements, number three, four years enrollment beyond grade eight or its age equivalent, what, what does that mean? The expected age that a child would be at the eighth grade, what, how do we interpret this? I'm on page one of two on I K F. Under B, high school certificate requirements, number three, four years enrollment beyond grade eight or its age equivalent.
Yes, for, yes, that's for students who are not pursuing a diploma, they're in like a life skills program.
Right.
And so in order for them to earn that certificate, since they're not going to graduate, that they attend that, that high school level sort of course for four years.
Right. So.
Or be 18.
Yes, or, or be actually 21.
21.
Okay, so four years enrollment beyond grade eight or its age equivalent. So we're talking, the age equivalent is 21?
Well, 18, but they can stay until they're 21. But they have to stay at least four to get that certificate.
So they have to be 18, but they could be 21.
So could we not say that instead? I mean.
Now we're tracking comorbidities.
Well, some kids, for example, if they, if they come up to the high school certificate program, just like some eighth graders do when they're 13 years old because of when they started school, they could do four years before they turn 18 and be able to, to receive that certificate.
I see.
So I think that's why it doesn't really peg an age. We have kids graduating at 16, 17, 18, 19. You know, it just depends on when they happen to start, if they moved here from someplace that had a later starting age. So I think it's just to say that in order to meet the requirements of that certificate, you have to basically attend after eighth grade for four years, whether that's in a high school or whether it's at Marshall Street, wherever, but you have to be in that sort of a secondary program for four years.
Okay. May I go ahead?
Go ahead.
On page two of two, same policy. We go, these are graduation requirements, requirement for a high school diploma is A, high school certificate is B, and then we go to C, credit for high school courses taken in middle school. So my question is, what's the rationale for not having that middle school coursework be counted towards graduation?
I think it does count toward graduation. It doesn't count toward GPA.
Towards GPA, I'm sorry. That's, so what, what's the rationale for not having it? It would appear on their transcript, would it not?
Yes.
But why would they not?
Because.
Get GPA credit for it?
I think the feeling is that, has always been, that your GPA obviously is going to decide your, whether you're valedictorian, salutatorian, where you are in class ranking, et cetera, and that it, the diploma's going to have the high school name on it. And so they want to have total control over the rigor and the standards that you had to meet in order to earn your GPA.
If I might speak to that, I earned credit for three math classes that I took in middle school, and I actually took those in Iowa where I went to middle school. And we had a different grading system where the percentages were for grades. And so under that system, I would have earned different grades than I would have earned here, so there was a complication there. And I mean, also, just that my GPA was earned through my high school career rather than my middle school career. I mean, I still completed the coursework and passed the courses, obviously, and so that counts for my graduation, but the GPA was earned in middle.
High school.
Yeah.
And then I would add also that in, in a case like that, when you're talking about a student who has a GPA higher than four, even if they earned As in middle school, those would be non-weighted courses, and it would actually pull their GPA down.
Really?
Yeah. So, believe me, you know, our top competing students don't want extra courses being in their GPA.
All right. Thank you for explaining that, Rick. Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions or comments? The question is on the approval of the first read of policy I G D L, I K C, and I K F. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero, and the student member concurs. Thank you all. Next under new business is consideration of the first reading of, well, I'll just call them the purchasing policies.
Thank you. The Board of Education's policies governing the procurement of goods and services are set forth in policy D J, D J F, and D J G. The superintendent, in consultation with staff and the policy committee, has conducted a comprehensive review of these three policies. The policy committee conducted a work session on September 17th and October 15th. As a result of that work, there are a number of recommendations that are going to be offered to the board this afternoon. Policy D J has been reorganized. It's being recommended that the title be changed to Purchasing Standards. When you examine paragraph B, which is definitions, you'll find that an extensive number of new definitions have been added to this proposed policy, and that a new section C appears in the policy. What section C does is that it sets forth the nine different types of procurements. Policy D J also includes several new provisions that I wanted to bring to your attention. One deals with G, which is the option to renew or to extend an original contract. In some cases, you have a contract in place, you want to renew that contract, or you want to exercise an option to extend it for an additional period of time. Right now, there are really no clear, there's no clear direction with this policy. What this policy does is that it provides very clear direction on the process that you have to follow in order to proceed with that type of action, and also what types of approvals are required. A new section was added on splitting procurements, and what that new provision provides is that it would be prohibited from taking a procurement and breaking it into smaller procurements in order to avoid the bidding process. Another new section that was added concerns the retention of records, it now makes it clear that with regard to procurement records, they are to be maintained for a period of five years after the goods are received or services are provided. A next one of the move to policy DJG, which concerns professional services. The work that we've done here has clarified the process and procedures for professional services. What are the steps that you need to take to secure the necessary approvals of a transaction of this nature? The new policy makes it very, very clear that if the cost of a professional service is expected to be fifty thousand dollars or more, that the Board of Education's approval is required. Now, the policy provides for three exceptions to that. One of the exceptions would be in the case of an emergency, where there's a need to take immediate action. Another exception would be that as part of the Board of Education's budget process, it approves an item in the budget that relates to professional services, and one of the examples of that would be school resource officers, where we have agreements with the county and the city that relate to these services. And also, in the area of special education services, those would be the three exceptions to that rule, that if it's a professional service, it's fifty thousand dollars or more, the board must approve it. All transactions that are less than fifty thousand dollars are subject to the superintendent's approval. Moving on, next to policy DJF, as a result of this study that was conducted, it was concluded that this policy really was not needed, because it's already covered under Maryland law, and additionally, there were provisions added to policy DJ that covers this type of procurement. So the policy committee is recommending that this policy be rescinded. What we have prepared, which we think will be a useful tool for anyone who might be procuring one of the nine different types of services or goods that we referenced previously, is a chart. And what we've done in this chart is that we've set forth the nine types of procurements, we've looked at the method of procurement, we've looked at which entity or person must recommend that procurement, and then finally, the last column makes it very clear, who must approve that procurement. So I'd like to just take a look at professional services. If you have a professional service, the method of procurement would be if it's twenty-five thousand dollars or more, you must seek competitive pricing, and that's a new defined term in policy DJ. It then explains the entities or persons that must recommend this, and then finally, it indicates who must approve a transaction of this nature. So in a case of professional service, fifty thousand dollars or more, it must be approved by the board. And we welcome comments or questions at this point.
Is there a motion to approve the first reading of these policies?
What's the move, Mr. President? Do you need me to read them?
Just for clarity, if you would read the policy, just the letters at least.
A move to approve the first reading policy, revised policy DJ entitled purchasing, and revised policy DJG entitled professional service contracts, and to approve the first reading of, to rescind policy DJF entitled purchasing policies, procedures, excuse me.
There's one other administrative regulation.
On this?
DJR.
It's not listed on here.
Mr. President, we offer that as an informational item.
Okay, great.
He said, "rescind." Yeah, he said, "rescind." Oh, did he? I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
All right, is there a second to Mr. Ridenhour's motion?
Second, sort of kind of.
Thank you, Mrs. Breit.
Sort of kind of. No, it's just, it was a little bit humor.
We got it. Is there any discussion on the? I'm just going to take a moment to kick it off, and I think first, thank the superintendent, thank the procurement office, the purchasing department, thank Mr. Trotta, Mr. South, all the people who are involved in this. This has been going on in the policy committee for a couple of months. I think they brought us a draft a couple of months ago. The policy committee worked on it, went back to staff, they incorporated our changes, made some more changes of their own. I think each step along the way really improved the document. It came back to us, we made even some more changes. So this has really been an ongoing process in an effort to have one set of policies that really makes it clear, as he said, as Mr. Trotta said with the regulation, whatever kind of procurement you want to do, you look at the chart, you see where it is, how you do it, who approves, it really makes it clear, and I think will be helpful to me as a board member, hopefully helpful to the public as they see how we procure equipment, hopefully, or procure things, and hopefully helpful to the staff, as it makes very clear where everything fits on that matrix. So I just want to thank everybody involved for a really good discussion so far. This is the first read, so the board's got a crack at it, the policy committee will have another crack at it, and then we'll have a second read, and hopefully we can continue to improve the product. But I think this is a great improvement in this area of our policy. So with that, other comments or questions?
Just that you took the words out of my mouth, but in particular, I think this chart will just streamline so many procedures and help so many people understand, and I think this was primarily Mr. Trotta's accomplishment is this chart.
Other comments? Mrs. Breit?
I was just going to ask her to clarify, you're talking about the regulate, the R here? DJR, we're not voting on it, but it is. Thank you.
Mrs. Breit?
I will just say that this is a huge improvement, I think it helps board members, I think it helps staff, I think it helps all of us be on the same page, and I think it's great. That said, I have many questions that I'm not going to all bring forth, this is a first read, there's a few I'd like to ask tonight, and then I will probably list them and send them to the policy committee, if that's all right, so we don't go too far over the five-minute. A couple, on page two of six, and I'm on DJ, standards, purchasing standards. When we talk about pre-qualification, what kind of controls do we have in place in the event that someone or a company is pre-qualified? Do they automatically just stay on there forever and ever, or is there some sort of system where they have to re-qualify, or we review them, or update? How does that work?
You know, we're, first of all, I just want to thank everyone for their comments, it's really an exceptional process, and we've really improved this work product as a result of everyone being involved and often comments. One of the things that we did in this particular definition is that we added some qualifiers in there, and that is that the company must provide the purchasing office with the most up-to-date documentary support, such as references, licensures, proof of financial stability, insurance, and additional information that may be required by the purchasing office to establish its competency to bid on construction and related services. And what happens as a practical matter is that you're ready to procure a matter, an item, and you have companies on the list, how do you know that it's up to date? So this language was intended to place the burden on that company, to make sure that if there are changes in their, in their status, they may have had financial difficulties, they may have downsized their organization, because we're looking at a capacity of a company to perform a service. So we certainly would welcome any additional comments that you might offer, but that's why we put some of that language in there, to put the burden on the company to keep its information up to date.
And I think that's good, from that perspective, but what would indicate to us, or staff, when we looked at the list, that maybe somebody isn't up to date? Would it be highlighted, would it be flagged, would there be some automatic, a date, and as soon as that date runs out, you would do a form that goes out to the company saying, "by the way, is all this information correct?" Would we have any pushout?
One of, one of the things that we could do, and I can talk to Mrs. Freeman about this, is that whenever we send a solicitation out, where it involves a pre-qualify bidder, to place in that document that it's your responsibility to make sure that your information is up to date, or she could actually request that they provide any updated information, but I certainly can speak to her.
If it was like a date or a trigger, would be a real?
Could it be a yearly?
I just throwing it out there.
They have to update yearly?
I think we've moved to a new electronic procurement system, if you haven't looked at our purchasing pages, I'd encourage you to, because one of the things that it will do is, we can require all of that on their electronic submissions, that, first of all, there can be a simple check-off to say, "all of these things are up to date," or, "have you edited or changed them?" But we'll double-check on what our ask is right now, but again, we've moved to a new purchasing system, I think this is a relatively straightforward set of questions for people.
Number fifteen on the same page, registered company, and talking about that you can register to receive bids and proposals, and again, Dr. Wilcox, you may have just mentioned, is this website up and running?
Yes.
I'm on it right now.
Yes.
Of course he is.
It was, Lisa and her team actually put it together, working with High Rock here in town.
I knew that, sorry, thank you.
It's a pretty sophisticated system.
Great.
Yeah, it looks pretty fancy.
In the, just a little soft question of the three exemptions or exceptions to the board having to see anything over fifty thousand, the emergency, the special ed, and if it's in the budget. I understand all of those, and the need for operational nimbleness on that. I have a little concern on if, for instance, the superintendent should enter into a contract, then it says here, "at the next board meeting, we hear about the contract, we're told about it." What if a majority of the board members disagree? Is there a bailout? And I'm not saying we'd ever disagree with Dr. Wilcox, but he's supposed to laugh now, but, yeah, but what kind of bailout is there for that? Because we're legally still responsible for the amount.
The practice that we currently follow is that there is information given to the board to make them aware. So let me give you an example, you have a roof collapse, you've got to move for a number of reasons immediately, and we would follow a procurement process, but it might be by telephone, various roofers come out today, give us a quote today, because it must be attended to, you have to take immediate action, or your building can sustain serious action. We would let the members of the board know that we have to move forward, because this is an emergency, and then what would happen is, is that at the next business meeting of the board, it would be presented to the board, not for approval, but more of an informational item, the way this is set up. I'd also point out, under Maryland law that deals with competitive bidding, that's five-dash-one-one-two of the education article, that emergency repairs, in particular, are precluded from the requirements of competitive bidding for this very reason. So this is going to be a real emergency, you might have a storm come through, I mean, I've been involved in situations of that nature, and you really need to be moving within, you know, because the storm is occurring.
And I get that, I guess I'm asking and?
She wants to know, what happens if I approve something? Can it actually obligate the district? Does the board have the authority at the next meeting to invalidate the superintendent's action and contract? Yes or no?
The answer would be?
Yes or no, Tom?
He can't do that. It's not possible.
It would be no.
I'm sorry.
It's no.
The answer would be, it would be no.
It would be no. So that's one of those kind of relationships with the superintendent that you have.
No, I was just?
But your recourse is, and this is back to our evaluation question, there's only one person who can be fired when four people say, "we don't like your decision on that issue," and that would be me.
I'm not going to go there, okay. And to the other exemption, if it's in the budget, it must be so, exemption?
We're trying to?
That seems a little awkward to me. I think I get it, but it's?
It's been?
Do you know how thick the budget is, and how difficult it is? I read it, I know my colleagues all read it, but it's not necessarily something that the citizens all read?
I would share with you, it's been, as a practical matter, that's what has occurred as a matter of practice. So this really formalizes that business practice, and to my knowledge, you're looking at, I believe there's two classifications of contracts that fall into that category, would be your school resource officers, and also we have our bus contractors.
And it says, "other similar procurements," that's a pretty open.
Well, we wanted to provide? We wanted to provide some flexibility, and certainly, I think it would be helpful during the budgetary process, and then Mr. South will do this, is to point out those particular procurements that fall under this exception, but at this point, I'm only aware of those two exceptions. And that has been the business practice.
The only other exception that I'm aware of under Maryland statute would be for special education law, if a placement for an individual student was going to be in excess of fifty thousand dollars, I would have the authority to do that. Other than that, I'm not aware of any specific suggestions.
I really am not, and that's, of course, the IEP, Individual Educational Plan, we would be dictated by federal and state law to follow, the requirements set forth in that document, or you face, frankly, significantly greater exposure for not complying with that requirement.
One last one, page five of six, F, under local purchasing. It goes through, after completion and pricing, the quality, everything's equal, the Board of Education will give preference to local vendors. Do we really want that to be "will," or do we want it to be "may"?
This is language that was retained from, this is the status quo.
And?
And so, I mean?
But I'm just throwing that out as?
It would really be a matter for the board members to decide whether they'd like to change that line here. And there was a qualifier added in there by the purchasing office, that they want to make clear, that everything is equal, we can still look at the past performance of that local company to make sure it's been acceptable in the past. So that was the language that was added, but your question relates to the status quo.
Very good, and I'll send the rest of mine over to the policy committee, thank you.
Are there other questions or discussion on purchasing policies? None? If not, the question is on Mr. Ridenhour's motion to approve policy DJ, DJG, and rescission of DJF. All those in favor? Are any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero, and the student member concurs. Thank you, Mr. Trotta, thank you, Dr. Marco.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Superintendent's report?
Yes, Senator.
We're going to have a report talking about the school performance indicators, is that correct?
School progress index.
That's what I meant.
SPI.
Anyway, we're having something about schools. Go figure.
Dr. Hardin, members of the board, Dr. Wilcox, this afternoon, I'm presenting the school progress index data. This was released by the state on October the thirtieth, this past week. This slide reviews the areas that go into calculating the SPI. The equation is the same for both elementary and middle schools. Each area has their own AMO, or annual measurable outcome, and the school's value is compared against this number to give the SPI value. An SPI of one or above in any of the areas indicate that the AMO is met. So the first area is achievement, this measures the proficiency levels in math, reading, and science on the MSA. Since it measures all three subjects, each of these contribute a third to the overall achievement number. The second area is the gap, which measures the gap between the highest achieving subgroup and the lowest achieving subgroup. Again, this looks at math, reading, and science, and remember that gap has a different AMO than achievement. Since there are three areas, again, each area contributes one-third of the value to the overall gap SPI. The last area is growth, which measures the percent of students showing one year of growth. This measures just math and reading, since these are the only tests that these students take each year. take each year. Each area contributes one-half of the overall growth number. Each area has a different contribution to the overall SPI for the grade level. Achievement contributes 30%. Gap contributes 40%, and growth contributes 30%. The SPI is going to include both regular MSA and the alt MSA. This slide shows the school progress index for each grade span, and you can see here that I've highlighted the elementary school first. The achievement indicator is the highest at .9203. This is followed by the growth indicator at .8777, and the gap is at .7485. This slide, the middle school level is now highlighted. These are the same measures again, as used for elementary school. The achievement is again the highest indicator at .9627, followed by the growth at .8960, and the gap is at .7020.
So explain to the board members the fact that an SPI of one or higher indicates that we've met our AMO, our annual measurable objective. We don't see any ones there.
We do not see any ones there. And this was to be expected, because if you recall, when I presented the MSA scores, that the achievement was down, the growth was down because of the transition to the Common Core. So this was not an unexpected result, and across the state, we don't see a lot of ones because everyone's kind of in the same boat that we are. So we don't see a lot of ones in this area. For high schools, the SPI is calculated differently. This shows the SPI calculation. And for the first one with achievement, again, we're going to use math, and that is determined by the number of students who have passed the algebra HSA. And then English is demonstrated by the students who have passed the English HSA, and science proficiency is demonstrated on the biology HSA pass rate. So these three tests each contribute one-third to the overall achievement area. The gap calculation includes the gap again between the lowest performing subgroup and the highest performing subgroup. It also includes the gap for cohort graduation rate. This is the five-year graduation rate, the four-year dropout rate, and also English, math, and science. Since each... I'm sorry?
When you talk about the gap and you talk about the groups...
Correct.
For us, a group is constituted by how many students in any one group in order for it to count as a group?
It would be, I believe, 10 or less.
Okay.
Would exclude...
And it's 10, sorry. Just so you know, that one or two kids at a school don't create a group.
It used to be five, didn't it?
I believe it was five.
Yes, it was five at one time.
The third SPI area is, this is different from the elementary and middle school, and this is college and career readiness. 60% of this area is determined by the five-year cohort graduation rate. The remaining 40% uses different indicators. It can be passing an IB or an AP exam, achieving an advanced standing in a career or technology education concentrator, so that would be enrolling in the third course in the concentrator, or enrolling in post-secondary education within 16 months of graduation. So those areas contribute to the overall SPI calculation, with achievement and gap each contributing 40%, and then college and career readiness contributing 20%. So it's, this is the same graph again. The high school level is now highlighted, and you'll notice that instead of growth, because we don't see growth on this, it's replaced with the college and career readiness area. For high schools, the achievement level is the highest at 1.1543, followed by college and career readiness at 1.0220, and gap at .8805. And here's where we see the ones, because achievement and college career readiness are above one, so we would see that the AMOs in these areas are being met. So we look at these overall for each grade span, and the elementary level, the overall SPI was .8388. For middle school, the overall SPI was .8384, and the high school was at 1.0183. Then we've averaged these three values based on the student population in each level, and that gives a final county SPI of .9099. After we've calculated the SPI, we look at a strand to see where the school is going to fall into, so that we can identify the resources, interventions, any accolades for these schools. Schools will fall into one of five strands. Schools in strand one must have an overall SPI score of one or greater, and have met the AMOs for all three indicators. Schools in strands two through four will have an SPI greater than or equal to .9, and they have to meet at least two of the three indicators. And then if a school is in strand five, the SPI for the school is less than .9, and fewer than two indicators were met. I've provided a summary of our schools for county elementary schools. The range of the strands is from two to five. For middle schools, the range of the strands is from three to five. And then for the high schools, again, since the SPI values were greater and above one, we would expect the results where four high schools are falling into strand one, four are in strand two, and one is in strand four. Happy to take any questions that you have.
Why don't you talk about, say, one of the schools at the elementary level in strand five? Do you have any specific data?
I do.
Just to show that a very healthy school can find itself in strand five? Can you...
Let me go back to... That's so that you can kind of get an idea of where they would fall. I'll pick on Rockland Woods, because Ms. Stiles just talked to me about it. She was disappointed with her results.
And so, I think for board members and community members, this is a school, this is a very strong school. But listen to this data.
Okay. Their contribution from achievement, out of the 30%, would be 28.72%. Their contribution for growth, out of the 30%, would be 27.34%. And then for the gap reduction, out of the 40%, it's 31.35. Now, one of the things that she said that contributed to that gap, or the growth, I'm sorry, was they have a really excellent fourth-grade teacher, so the students achieved very highly on the fourth-grade test. So when they went to fifth grade, because the teacher was so fantastic in fourth grade, that they didn't grow as much. So they grew more in fourth grade, so from third to fourth, this school looked great, and then from fourth to fifth, they didn't look so good. Not because the teacher wasn't effective, but because the fourth-grade teacher was highly, highly effective.
So my point is, is in a number of schools where you have outstanding teachers doing great work, and gaining, say, a year and a half during a year's time, the next teacher, if they can't do similar growth, it appears that, through this scoring metrics, that we've dropped off, even though the kids may be at or above grade level. So I simply wanted to point that out to you, that growth in this model is an aggregate, it's a cumulative model. Now, again, I'm not trying to make excuses for our proficiency. We have a lot of work to do. But that said, there are just some places where if you took a look at a strand score alone, you wouldn't get a full picture of what's really going on in that school. Because the way the system works, it doesn't account for some of the unique deliveries that happen within schools. That's why we didn't get too upset about this.
Mrs. White?
Yes. If you have a school in strand five, and there are other indicators that tell us that that school has needs, what are we doing for those schools that are finding themselves? Are we doing anything special based on SPI? Is there anything coming from the state by way of, you know, here's some money that you can use to address schools that are in difficulty due to their SPI scores? Or is it all on us to figure that out and use our resources?
Well, let me say, first of all, not just based solely on an SPI score.
Right.
We're not going to move mountains for that. But a difficult SPI score for a school, meaning not achieving one, is going to kick in a number of interventions, both at the school level and from the district. Maureen, do you want to talk about anything specific that you're aware of before I go on?
I think a lot of it is instructional practices, and we talk a lot with principals about what's going on at the school. Like with Rockland Woods, that was something that pointed to a drop. So we would look at something like that and kind of analyze the data. They look at their contributions, so they know which area they are suffering the most in. So for a certain school, maybe the growth was low, but the gap was, had a bigger impact. So they would know that an intervention that they might want to put in place, they know what areas, and each gap is different. There's a science gap, a English gap, and a math gap. And what they can do is look at that, maybe reallocate some resources that they've had. They look at what services they're providing to the lower subgroup, so that they can help to raise those kids up. And it just helps them to kind of get a better idea of where to focus their resources, instead of just, "I want to make things better." Thank you.
So this, I mean, there are several points, and I think Maureen did a marvelous job of talking about how a school might use this to reallocate resources within. One of the things that I know from looking at the list is, also, a number of our Title I schools are our strand five schools. So those schools get extra resources by definition, where most of those schools have struggled as being able to close gaps. And so we're looking at how those Title I dollars are being spent more efficiently and effectively. We're looking at the transitions that kids have between subjects, trying to build a more integrated approach to instruction for many of those kids. One of the things that, from this table, we've talked a little bit about is some of the foundational skills that kids have to have in order to demonstrate competence. So we are working on some foundational skills in terms of word attack, to help the kids around literacy. We have a number of new activities that we are doing to strengthen them. In math, we're simply doing something as common as reviewing our math facts, so that kids have more executive competence, if you will, with being able to manipulate data, because they have the facts right at hand. So there are a number of things going on.
Mrs. Fisher?
Would you happen to know how many counties surpassed Washington County in overall SPI?
In overall SPI? It was similar to our, we were 17th, which is not surprising considering where our MSA scores were. And since this is based purely on MSA, except for the high school. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bailey?
As I look at the SPI for our high schools, would my interpretation be correct that by the time we finish with them in high school, their performance is pretty good? In other words, you have strand one, strand two, you have four schools in each of those. So by the time they finish Washington County Public Schools, they have done pretty well? Can I read it that way?
I would read it similar to that. I think what we're doing is we're working while the graduation rate is very good, our dropout rate is very good, because it's very low. And then I think we're focusing a lot of attention on the college and career readiness. So that's part of the equation as well. So by putting a lot of those, I know I've sat here with SAT and AP and IB scores, we're being very successful with those kids. And I think when you look at it over high school, we have four years to work with them. So maybe they don't pass the algebra test the first time. We have another year to work with them, give them remediation, and get them ready to pass it. And so it's slightly different, because rather than the elementary and middle, where it's something that they're tested every year, they have multiple choices, multiple chances to pass that HSA. So, and many of our children are successful in those areas.
You also presented data to me yesterday that I've not shared with the board yet, that we've improved both our college going rates, our college readiness rate, and our stay in college rate. Our kids not only are going and completing their freshman year, but they're going back for their sophomore year, in really record numbers for us, so.
Mrs. Bro.
A couple short questions. How are we taking SPI? And I know we've been doing these different educational forums for some time now to help people understand the new Common Core standards and the PARC assessments. What are we doing in the school communities themselves to help them understand exactly like the story at Rockland? So if a parent's listening tonight, and their child goes to Rockland, and all of a sudden they're up at strand five, what are we doing to help them understand, to interpret that in a more, in a more balanced way?
I think we work a lot with the principals, so that the principals understand what goes into it, so that they're able to better articulate to the parents, that it's not... We stress a lot that a strand five school is not a failing school. It's a one-year measure, and it changes the next year. So I think by working with the principals and helping them, I know Kathy was not happy with the fact that she was a strand five school, so we talked a lot about, you know, what it really means. And it's not that she's necessarily a bad school, but, you know, she had a one-year struggle, and there's reasons for that. So I work a lot with the principals to explain what the SPI means to them, what they can do to improve their SPI score, and then how to present it to parents.
I think the other thing is, is a system, and we've said this to our teachers, and will continue to say to the larger community, we are not a school system that is going to be motivated by one indicator of our success. I think there are many other things that indicate that this is a great school system, not only to go to school, but to work in. Mr. Bailey pointed out that when our kids leave us, they're not only successful in college and university, they're successful in careers. I was just Friday night with a group of folks who celebrated military service, and the kids who came out of the Smithsburg community, and how well those young men are doing, and young women are doing, serving their country. So we don't lose a lot of sleep over any one indicator. We did lose a lot of sleep over MSAs. I think there are things that parents and kids know are much more important in terms of their overall measurement. Do we take it seriously? Absolutely. Do we review it? Do we look at data? Do we try to improve instruction based on it? Absolutely. But we're not, as a system, going to go to, say, Rockland Woods and apply an increased amount of pressure on the pressure that they're already putting on themselves to improve. And I think that's how you become a healthier, higher-performing district, is that you keep things in perspective, and you don't lose sight of the fact that these tests mark moments in time, they are not indicative of our overall health.
And just one added little question. The new College Readiness Act with the junior, a lot of the grade testing, will that be wrapped into the SPI? I don't know from reading the act whether it will be included in the information.
I think there's a lot of discussion about, is SPI going to be valid going forward in the PARC environment?
Okay.
I don't know. I haven't heard anything directly about how...
We've not gotten any indication about how. It's obviously going to have to change somehow, but we haven't gotten any indication of exactly how it's going to change with PARC.
Or any other test that's mandated between... Thank you.
Ms. Huxman?
I had just a question on the strand summary. Which middle school is not represented there?
I'm sorry?
Which middle school is not represented there?
It's probably Hancock Middle Senior High.
Is it not tested?
It's included in the high school.
They're combined.
They're combined. The state, it's a multi-span school, because it's in, because it serves both middle and high school. It's included in that.
Do you know if it's strand two or south is?
I believe there's strand...
I think there's strand two, or is it not?
Strand two, yes. And what they do with Hancock Middle Senior High is they combine them. They look at the population, sort of similar to the elementary schools. When we combine all the schools into, get the county SPI, Hancock Middle Senior High, because they have middle schools and high schools, they take those numbers and combine them based on the population of the students in the school. And then they're a multi-span school.
Then is, is, how does that show up in this? That it's, that there's a middle school there? Because the rest are all high schools, correct?
Correct. It's just a multi-span school.
The other way to read it would be that if there was just a high school level...
The other way to read it, if there's just a high school level, the high school would read four, three, and one. And then there would be a multi-span that would just read zero, one, zero, zero, zero.
Okay. Thank you.
Do they include with the school like Hancock?
Do they include with the school like Hancock? The three measures that you have for high schools are different than the three measures for a middle school?
Correct.
How do they, how do they, just out of curiosity, you know?
It's similar to this, where you have the elementary, middle, and high combined together to give the county SPI.
Okay.
What they do is they average them based on the populations.
I got you. You made one statement that was interesting in regards to Rockland. You said about the fourth grade teacher or the fourth grade class that did so well a year and a half approximately of growth. The growth in the fifth grade was down a little bit below that. I mean, that doesn't necessarily indicate that that teacher in the fifth grade is doing a poor job.
No.
I mean, it just, how do you, how is that taken into consideration? If you have a school, for example, or a class that has grown a year and a half, you know, they're going to stand out like a sore thumb just as one that was doing very poorly would. How do you go from four and a half or five and a, fourth grade, you have four to five and a half, for example? So they start at five and a half and look for a year's growth from there?
Correct.
Okay.
What the growth is, is it's measuring a year's worth of growth. So if you exceed that, then it's a good thing, but then if you don't, then it's a bad thing, even though the kids started off ahead.
So they could end up at the end of their fifth grade year, you know, not only having fifth grade growth, but also 5.2, and they're still, they haven't grown that year per se.
Correct.
You know?
And that's, again, this is one indicator that it gives a limited picture as to
Oh, yeah.
what we're seeing.
Well, and, you know, I think what's one of the tough things for us in terms of our classroom teachers, they personalize this.
Oh, absolutely. That's what, I mean, that is the reason I asked the question because, you know, you may, as a classroom teacher, have, you know, your kids may be doing all the fifth grade work that they're expected to do.
Absolutely.
But you're not doing, you know, you haven't, you haven't gotten a year's worth of growth. You know, we sometimes, you know.
That's why you see we don't put a lot of stock in some of this.
Thank God, because it just doesn't, you know, it wouldn't make sense to me.
I mean, I would ask the question too. Is, if you're talking about measuring a year's worth of growth, now, you could, you could write a test, an assessment of some sort, I assume, that would assess where you are in terms of a grade level chart. Now, was the MSA written and designed for that function? I don't think it was.
No. It's not a growth model test.
And if they're now using the MSA as the way to determine that, I mean, there's a limitation of the test anyway, and it's, or of the formula. And I was going to say, I'll say it, it's not something that I say often, but I wouldn't get too wrapped up in the numbers. I mean.
But I think.
Because, but I'm serious. I mean, if you look, I didn't mean that for the finance department. But if you look at how they're calculating the strand, right? They've got a third math, a third reading, and a third science. You could probably find people who would say, that's not the right mix. Some of them might be at this table. Some of them might say, science should be smaller, some might say it should be larger. You've got a third, or 30% achievement, 40% gap, 30% growth. Well, you'd probably find a lot of people who would tell you, that's not the right mix either. So I wouldn't run around, I would hope, and what Dr. Wilcox has said indicates that we don't, that we wouldn't run around chasing scores based on some formula that somebody came up with using a test that may or may not have been designed for this particular purpose. Now, that's not to say that the people who designed the formula didn't do the best they could, that there wasn't a lot of research that went into it. But it is to say that to try to use those numbers for some sort of fine tuning of your instruction, I think, way, way misses the point. And if you chase scores that, you know, this class in this school was down, if you go and put resources there, it's like a water balloon. You push in one side, it's going to come out someplace else. And I think what Dr. Wilcox has said, since he's been here really, which is, focus on your craft, focus on great teaching, focus on a great curriculum, focusing on, focus on having kids ready to learn, and the rest will take care of itself. And I would hope that's, as a system, what we would continue to do. Are there other comments? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Personnel action.
Dr. Harding, Dr. Wilcox, members of the board. As we discussed in closed session, there are several personnel actions for your consideration today.
Is there a motion to approve the personnel actions recommended by staff?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bailey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Breidenhour. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the personnel actions? Is there any opposed? The motion passes seven to zero, and the student member abstains.
You have four and a half of your minutes back.
Thank you. The HR department.
Let's see if you're going to lend them to food service and facilities here. Next is the official student enrollment free and reduced meal eligibility rates.
Good afternoon, President Harding, members.
And I may have missed it when I stepped out. Did we do the, or is it coming up, the motion that you wrote for Chad?
It, sorry, it was.
Honkstas, thank you, I stepped out, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Chad, you were great and I missed it. I'm sorry.
He really was spectacular.
Sorry. And I'm sorry, Boyd.
It's okay. This afternoon, we're going to present the official September 30th enrollment numbers for 2013, as well as the official farm pre-reduced meal rates for the counties that are captured at the end of October. Just very briefly, in kindergarten, excuse me, in K to five, we grew 22 students over last year. As anticipated last year, we anticipated a low kindergarten class coming in based on birth rates. That proved to be true. We're down about 125 kindergarteners. Our largest class in the school system right now is the one that's in first grade, I believe, with about 1,800 children. However, we did grow it at the elementary level, K to five, as well as pre-K, as you see on down the chart. Middle school is the area we had our largest growth with 86 students. And high school, we anticipated we'd actually grow a little bit in high school, and we decreased, and we're just in the process, we just received the final numbers actually yesterday, and we're in the process of looking at why that might have been. One reason we're seeing already is we had unusually high number of graduating juniors last year. About half, again, as many as normally graduate, over 100. I think we, the year before, we had about 54 or 5. Some years we averaged, I think our average is about 70. So we're continuing to look at that information. Our enrollment is up for the 13th year in a row. Some years, we've obviously grown at a more rapid rate than others, but again, we are up in a K to 12 number, and that's what we call our money number, the number that we send to the state for which we receive per student allotment numbers. As we look at our pre-K to five enrollment, that would be the 22 students that grew in K to five, as well as our pre-K growth, we believe about 21 students. We see things kind of all over the map. We see that kindergarten small class reflected at some schools significantly down, and other schools, we see their kindergarten class significantly up, even though the net kindergarten group is actually down significantly. Right away, Boonsboro Elementary is down. That's actually a good thing, based on their state rate of capacity needs there. So I'm sure that's helped in the area of being able to manage students and classrooms and things like that. Fairstring is down as well. And we're seeing somewhat a pattern again, where we're seeing some of the schools that are down, particularly kindergarten, and it's not accounting for all of this, we're seeing in the more affluent areas, and we're seeing some growth in some of our more challenged population areas. Dow, another thing we saw, Dow Fountaindale and at Williamsport, three of our four magnet schools, we saw growth. As we've talked to the principals informally, we've seen more children push in, I think as a result of some of our testing programs last year and some of the promotion of the magnet program. So I think that's some of the growth that we saw at those three schools. We move on to a redistricting effort last year. If you look at Pangborn and Paramount, they're kind of paired together. The result is exactly what was predicted, and we're very, very pleased to report that information. Pangborn's down approximately 65 students, which was roughly what Mr. Christwell shared with you during the redistricting process. We believe some of that growth that we kept seeing and seeing that Pangborn area has also slowed a little bit. And you can see kind of where that growth has pushed the Paramount with the redistricting of the Cortland Manor, part of the Cortland Manor area to the Paramount District. You can see that pickup of 46 children. So it's better utilizing our resources at both of those schools and has not caused a major negative impact at either school. Temec Heights down 25. I think we predicted about being down 15, so we're not surprised they're down. Ruthan Monroe, Salem Avenue, and Williamsport, all up. And then Winter Street unusually up. They have classes of 38, 44, and suddenly they have a kindergarten class of 66 or 65. And right straight through their whole, all their grades, 38, 38, 44, 42, and it just hit this bubble of 20-plus more children in kindergarten. I can't explain it, but we're looking at it. Middle school numbers.
That doesn't mean that many in a classroom, that means that many in the whole class. I saw somebody's eyes go in the back. I just wanted to be sure that was clear.
I think additional resources were added there to take care of that.
Right.
I know that there were. Middle school, you can see some fluctuation in our middle school numbers. Again, we're up 86, the largest group. Heard at Hicks, we've been coming out of the, some of the developments south of 70 for that school, Northern Middle School, Springfield, Western Heights, all up. And then a couple of the other schools were down, Fairstring, Boonsboro, and Smithsburg. High school, again, Boonsboro was down. All three Boonsboro schools were down. So I don't know if there's some pattern there or not, but we're going to analyze some of that. Some shifting around of students attending Barbara Ingram, obviously the growth of technical high schools reflected in some of the decreases in some of the numbers, and obviously the growth of Tech High is seen there in the growth of 30 students. Our special ed centers generally run pretty consistent, so not a lot of variability there. And our farm report, based on the time that's been reported this way, we're up again. It's for our 13th year on this chart, reflects 11 years of a consistent measuring tool that we're using. And we're not necessarily pleased to report from the standpoint, hopefully receive an additional state aid. We're pleased to report, but we're concerned for our communities, we increase from 47.2 to 48.3 percent. We provided the board with school-by-school information, grade-by-grade information, and also farm information by school comparing last year to this year. And Jeff and Chad would be glad to respond to any questions. Thank you.
Mrs. Breitman?
The pre- and reduced percentage, that includes secondary as well, if I remember right. We usually, we sometimes pull out K to five or out of that number, and it usually goes up significantly.
This rate that you have in front of you is K to 12 across the system excluding pre-K students. This is the amount, number of students that we will then report with Mr. South's office in December for compensatory education funding. So it is, it is K 12 across the system, all schools.
You separate elementary out. We have in the past.
We could do that for you, we would see slightly higher at elementary.
It's usually a couple percentage.
Drop off a little bit and drop.
Correct. It does. Is that, will secondary families not want to apply? I can't imagine, I guess, the family economic situation improves, or?
Jeff, would you also talk to her about the unified application that we've talked about, please?
I can. So first, in response to your question, I think the trend across the country is that you see higher free and reduced rates at elementary schools.
Exactly.
That as students grow older, the stigma of being labeled, even though we protect that information so, you know, considerably, there's still that fear that my child will be identified as receiving free and reduced meals, not necessarily by the school, but perhaps by peers. So I think that is a reason for some of the decline in those numbers. As it relates to Dr. Wilcox's concern or question, we are taking part in a new program that's a pilot in state of Maryland this year. It's called the Community Eligibility Program. It allows us to serve universal free meals to students in schools without receiving a free and reduced meal benefit application. We're doing that in five schools, Chester, Winter Street, Salem, Antietam Academy, and the Family Center. Those families did actually have to provide a secondary application called a household survey so that we could get the qualifications for compensatory education funding, but all of those meals are being paid for by USDA.
Interesting. That's, that's good news.
It is good news.
The community needs that. That's great. Thank you.
Are there other questions on the enrollment numbers? All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Board Member Committee Reports. Curriculum Instruction.
Curriculum Instruction has not met since the last board meeting. We are planning to meet Tuesday, November 12th at 12:45 in the Board Conference Room, and the agenda will be posted.
Thank you, Mrs. Harschman. Mr. Bailey, Finance?
Finance Committee did not meet in October, will meet in November, and we will have an agenda posted.
Mrs. Fisher, Policy Reviews.
Policy Committee has not met since our last business meeting, and we were scheduled to meet November 12th. However, we've recently changed that. Policy Committee will be meeting this Friday at 2:00 PM.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Mrs. Breitman?
Facilities will be meeting on November 26th at Fester at 10:15 in the construction trailer.
Mr. Ridenhour?
HR has not met. We will be scheduling a meeting when necessary, probably the end of this month.
Thank you. Mr. Grunendike, Student Government?
Student Government has not met since our last board meeting. We will be meeting this Thursday. And something that relates to the board, we will be discussing a constitutional amendment for the Washington County Association of Student Councils to provide for a student member of the board intern, which would then serve the year before they actually became student member of the board. We're hoping that that constitutional amendment will provide for the student member to be able to serve the boards and the school district much better in the future. That meeting will be from 9:00 to 1:00.
Great. Thank you. And anything from MAE, the Legislative Committee?
Nothing that we didn't already discuss this morning at our work session.
Anything from conference planning or?
We had a wonderful conference.
We did receive some evaluation information, and the conference was well received. And there's people that filled out forms at the end of the sessions, had many nice comments to make about the sessions. One thing that was very popular and will probably be repeated in the future were those networking sessions where they grouped same-sized counties together, and we had three focus questions. So that, that was a very, very successful opportunity that was presented, so.
Great. Okay. Miscellaneous business, future agenda items, agenda planning has not met yet, so we really don't have anything new to report. So we will move on to Board Member Comments. Mr. Grunendike?
Nothing.
Mrs. Harschman?
Nothing.
Mrs. Williams?
I just want to say that I had a most enjoyable evening last night at the service of, at the service, at the celebration of service recognition dinner, and it was wonderful to see so many dedicated employees who were there to be recognized. So that was a great evening.
Mr. Bailey?
My apologies for not making that celebration of, or celebration of service.
It was a celebration.
It was a celebration.
That's what I, yeah. And I, I think that's the first one that I've ever missed, and regret it very much. But I have nothing else to comment on.
Mrs. Fisher?
Just agree that it was a nice evening last evening.
Mrs. Breitman?
Nothing more. Thank you.
Mr. Ridenhour? I just will wish everybody a happy Veterans Day. If you have the opportunity to thank a veteran or attend one of the events that's going on at many of our schools, please do that. Thanking a veteran means an awful lot to them, especially all the young veterans who've given so much in the last, last decade or decade plus, I suppose. I regret that for the first time since I've been on the board, I'm going to miss the clear spring Veterans Day ceremony, but if anybody has the opportunity to attend, it's, you certainly won't be disappointed. We've reached the end of the agenda. I will declare the meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Veterans Day ceremony. But if anybody has the opportunity to attend, it's, you certainly won't be disappointed. We've reached the end of the agenda. I will declare the meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone.